Nathan, do you want to say the pledge?
That's two switches.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord Jesus, I thank you for this time that we come to you and we ask that you be with us this evening. And we thank you for the many blessings we have. We ask that you bless us by this meeting and help us to be able to do work together and to function together and give us wisdom and strength to be able to make decisions. And we ask that you be with this community and this church, excuse me, and this church and this hospital. And you bless us and help us to be able to serve this community and most of all serve you. I would name my prayer.
The churches will appreciate it.
I was a blanket church. Courtney knows what I'm talking about.
Do you have any additions or changes to the agenda?
We need to, I think, and explain it to me, but if you look at the agenda, can we get that motion that we need to make? Fit into that finances under audit presentation.
Kathy asked us if the finance committee could have a motion authorized for the approve an engagement letter for Durbin for twenty-two or three or something.
For cost reports.
So should I just put that between the audit presentation after the audit?
I'm not sure. It needs to be its own thing. We can do it in finance committee report too.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to bring this. We got it on the agenda.
That's good you did that. Good job.
Okay, so we will, we will make sure that we can hear that. Has, has everybody had a chance to read through the minutes?
Is it possible that someone's covering a microphone with paper? We're getting a lot of feedback.
They look as normal as nor ever.
Look up there was one minute where the motion was.
I just want to bring those minutes on here, if you want to.
I can do that. That might make it easier for.
Oh, cool. Yeah, much better. Thank you.
Is it possible that there's another computer in that room that's on the Zoom call that's not muted? Sorry, there's just a lot of feedback.
Same here. I, I'm having a very hard time hearing you and hearing lots of scratchy sounds.
Allison, I'm going to try muting the speaker closest to me and just let us know if it makes it.
Yeah, that stopped it. We can't hear you guys now, though.
We'll just unmute it, I guess, if you, we need to say something or we can shout really loud.
Or you can't mute yours. Never mind.
So the, the motion or the.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, it's true. Just have to have the feedback. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
On the October seventeenth meeting minutes, the motion reads Ted Ertman made the motion authority to evaluate the Elevate contract, and I have no idea what that means or what it's supposed to say.
I bet just it's to evaluate.
To evaluate the Elevate contract? Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So on the October seventeenth minutes.
I bet it's made the, made motion to give Kathy the authority to evaluate. It's just missing Kathy. Well, we'll get that fixed.
Okay, that makes more sense now because when I read it, I'm like, I don't really know what that. Sorry about that.
Denise, I should have cut that also.
I'm sure I moved that we accept changes in the minutes on October seventeen and to accept the minutes as presented for October eighth, seventeenth, and thirty-third.
All right, have a second.
A second.
All of them favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Did you do the agenda?
Well, I just asked for changes. I actually didn't. Does somebody want to accept?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as it is.
No, you did. No, we just. No, I don't think we did.
I don't think we did. I think we did a motion. Okay, so Carrie moves. Who wants to?
I will second that.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
I'm sure I just had a couple of comments. Is this an appropriate time? I just wanted to give a shout out to KASL for doing the extra, they had offered to kick in some extra advertising because they felt that then the levy issue was such a strong one. And that was very kind of them. So I just wanted to recognize them and say thank you to KASL for doing that. And also in reading the minutes, I, I don't know how we missed the opportunity to congratulate and publicly thank you for accepting the position of permanent CEO. Thank you. We're, we're, I am welcome and grateful and.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
New chapter for us, so.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. I totally forgot these were behind me.
The other thing.
I gave Mary and Karine theirs already. You can see it here yesterday. Is anybody I missed? No, maybe it's got.
Are you guys still getting feedback? It's not currently providing it, but it's was. Sorry.
Okay, so. I thought if it was all right with the finance committee, we would start with the audit presentation. So Sean Johnson is here from. Hi, John.
Hello, everybody. Do you all have a, a screen in the room or are you going to follow along on the paper copies?
We have, we have the ability to have the screen, but we have the paper copy as well, so.
Okay, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and share that way that the folks on Zoom can also benefit from it as well.
Okay.
So you can follow along on my screen or on the, on the screen, or you can follow along on the paper copies. Well, I just want to thank everybody for having me. Quick introduction. My name is Sean Johnson. I'm a partner here with DZA. I was one who oversaw your 2023 audit. So this is for the fiscal year ended June thirty, 2023. The 2024 audit will happen a little bit after the first of the year. So this one is the one from 2023. There are three handouts that Kathy handed out and I'll, I'll have them up on the screen as well. So we have the audited financial statements, which is the first, the first handout I'll go over. And then we have two letters. One is what we call our management advisory comments letter. And then the other one is the board communication letter. And if anybody has any questions during this presentation, feel free to interrupt anytime and ask. So I'm going to start with the audit report, which is on page one of the audited financial statements. There's actually three audit reports in this packet, so I am going to go over all three. But the first one is our report on the financial statements themselves. It gives, it gives an opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion is that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. That's called an unmodified opinion. It's the type of opinion you want, which is good. It also, this report also talks about the, the, sorry, the financial statements being the responsibility of management. So management is responsible for the financial statements. We are responsible for auditing the financial statements as your auditor. I also wanted to point out there are about three quarters of the way down the page. There is an emphasis of matter paragraph. That's just there to disclose to the readers of these financial statements that you, you were required to implement some new accounting standards in 2023 on how you account for what we call subscription-based information technology arrangements, essentially when you, when you have a subscription for software. That is now recorded as a liability representing your obligation to pay under the contract. And then you also record an asset on the other side representing your ability to use that software over the term of the agreement. So that was, that is some new accounting standard that was implemented. And I'll show you where that shows up here in the financial statements. Go to the management's discussion analysis, which is on page four. This is where management had their opportunity to tell the story of the financial results for the fiscal year. I'm not going to go over this, but it just, it gives some various information on, you know, what happened during the fiscal year related to operations, revenues, expenses, capital asset activity, et cetera. So that, that's the first few pages of this financial statement. I'm going to go to page eight. Page eight is where actually the first official financial statement starts. So this is the, the statement of net position. You notice it does say combined. That's because these financial statements also include the foundation in them as what we call a blended component unit. So, so these statements do have both the hospital, the hospital district and the foundation blended together. So this statement is a snapshot on the last day of your fiscal year of your assets, liabilities, and net position. So assets are everything you own, liabilities are everything you owe, and net position is what's left over when you subtract liabilities from assets. We do split the assets into current and non-current. Current are more liquid in nature or expected to be converted to cash in the next year. Non-current are more, are more restricted in nature or, or they're not expected to be converted into cash like, like capital assets. So you can see as we kind of go down this page, you've got your, your cash and cash equivalents. You can see there was pretty size, pretty sizable decrease in cash. You'll see where that happened when we get to the cash flow statement. You also had some investments, mostly CDs, and that's actually partly where some of the cash went is into the CDs. Receivables, patient accounts receivables, that's the net amount that's owed to you by either your patients or their third-party payers. The third-party settlements is the cost report settlement. So that was the receivable on the 2023 Medicare cost report. Let's see, we keep moving down. Let's get the next few. The non-current assets. You do have some restricted investments. Those are the debt service funds. That decreased because you, you all paid off the twenty-two, sorry, the 2015 bonds during 2023. So that's partly the reason why cash went down. You'll see the debt go down on the next page, but also the related reserve went down as well.
But I think it was malice on Becky's part leading up to the mistake, malice on Becky's part during the mistake, and certainly malice on Becky's part after the mistake that has the public so upset about this.
Oh, 100%. I can't fathom why you would ignore the Secretary of State's phone call on election night unless you knew something was up and you didn't want to admit something was up and therefore you were trying to cover up what was up. Why else would you ignore his call if you knew, if you honestly thought there was no issue with your election? And everything was fine. Why would you ignore the Secretary of State?
Except for, except for maliciousness.
Yes, the following day after she talked to the Secretary of State twice, she somehow produced a perfect post-election audit despite later finding out that the election was off significantly.
Partly the reason why cash went down. You'll see the debt go down on the next page, but also the related reserve went down as well. Capital assets is the other large number there in that section. That's the undepreciated balance of your land buildings and equipment. On the next page is the liabilities and net position. So liabilities being everything you owe. We start with current, which is owed in the next year. And so you have your accounts payable, which you owed your vendors. And that's actually relatively low number. In 2023, it represented only fourteen days of operating expenses and ten days in 2022. So it means you are, you are paying your, your vendors on a relatively quick, quick basis after you get those invoices. Accrued payroll and related liabilities, which owed your employees for either payroll that they had earned but had not yet been paid, related taxes or, or related benefits. You also have a self-funded health insurance program, and so there is a liability that's included in there for claims that are outstanding that have not yet been paid. Accrued leave is the balance of your employee's vacation, vacation accounts. There was two amounts last year in 2022 that did not occur in 2023. The Medicare accelerated payments. So that's where during the pandemic where Medicare advanced you reimbursement. You, you did pay that all back during 2023, so it's no longer a liability. And then Unearned Cares Act provide a relief fund, a relief fund, another pandemic-related grant, let's say, that, that was recognized as revenue during 2023, so it was no longer unearned. You can see the current maturities of long-term debt decreased a lot because the fifteen bonds were paid off. So that 175 just represents the, the 2024 payments on the, on the seventeen bonds. And then you have your lease and subscription liabilities, both the current and non-current portion. And, and this is where we have that new accounting standard where we have the liability. And then we also have the asset that's built into the capital asset number on the previous page. So like I, like I mentioned before, the obligation to pay under those either lease or subscription agreements are recorded as, as both the current and non-current portion. Non-current liabilities, you have the, the 2017 bonds is the only piece of long-term debt you had left because the fifteen bonds were paid off, the long-term portion of lease and subscriptions. And then net position is split into three lines. The first line is net investment and capital assets. So that is the balance of your land buildings and equipment less the debt incurred to finance those. So it's less the long-term debt and less the, less the lease and subscription liabilities. The restricted by debt agreement matches the debt service funds on the previous page, and then everything else is unrestricted. The next page is your statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. So this is the revenues and expenses for the fiscal year. We do separate it between the operating section and the non-operating section. So from operations, obviously the biggest component of your revenue is your net patient service revenue, little bit of grant revenue and some other revenue. Operating expenses, biggest component is your salaries and wages and employee benefits, followed by supplies, professional fees, et cetera. If you look overall, the revenues decreased by about 5% from 2022 to 2023, but the expenses increased by about 4% from 22 to 23, which is why you see your operating loss being quite, quite a bit higher than it was in, in 2022. So this is definitely an area for you all as a board to be cognizant of and, and to, to try and turn that around going forward. From op, from non-operating revenues, you've got your, your property tax revenue there on the first line. Your sales tax, which most of that had decreased because the fifteen bonds had been paid off. And then some other, you had some other COVID grants. Those will, will be going away going forward. And then if you kind of go to, if you go to the third line from the bottom, you have your overall change in net position. So that's an overall loss for the year of about two point, a little over 2.3 million compared to where you had a, a, a little bit of a net income in 2022. The next statement is the cash flow statement. This just shows you where your cash came from and where it went for the fiscal year. We'll just cover the, the subtotals here. So from operating activities, you did have a net negative cash flow of about four point, almost 4.3 million. From non-capital financing activities, which is primarily tax revenue, but it was also payments on those Medicare accelerated payments. So you did generate a net positive $464,000 of, of cash flows. From capital and relating financing activities, that's mostly just debt payments or, 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 sorry, or purchases of capital assets. So you, you did, had a net negative $2.7 million of cash flows there. And then investing activities is just moving cash around between, between cash and investments. So overall, you had a net decrease in cash of about 6.3 million. So that kind of ties, that ties back to that first statement where you saw that cash decrease. I'm going to skip the next page and just move to the notes. So the notes start on page thirteen. The notes are information for the reader of the financial statements. It serves a few purposes. The first is to describe to the reader about your organization. So it does talk in those first couple paragraphs about the district, where you're located, services you provide, talks a little bit about the foundation as well. The next section is accounting policies. So areas that you are required to account for transactions a certain way, or in some instances, you might have a little bit of a choice in how you, you choose to account for transactions. So all that is disclosed so the readers understand how transactions are, are recorded. Then we have lots of pages of detailed schedules just to give further information on amounts in the financial statements or other significant disclosures. That's all I'm going to say about the notes. We have a lot of pages and that would take a, a long time to kind of go through all of them. So we're going to skip through those. I'm going to go now to the next audit report, which is on page thirty-three of, of the packet. This report is, is related to our testing of your internal controls over financial reporting in accordance with government auditing standards. You are a local governmental entity, so you are required to be audited in accordance with government auditing standards. And that just means that we look at your internal controls over the financial, financial reporting process. And any weaknesses that we identify that we would consider to be a material weakness or a significant deficiency, we would report those to you as a finding. What those two terms mean, material weakness means that it's a weakness that's severe enough to cause a material misstatement in your financial statements. Significant deficiency doesn't quite rise to that level, but it's still important for us to tell you about it. And I don't, actually don't have any findings on this report to tell you about. So this is, this is a clean report. The last report is, which is on page thirty-five, is our report on your compliance with your major federal grant program, which for the 23 fiscal year was the HHS Provider Relief Fund. So there's certain compliance requirements that the Provider Relief Fund had. They, they mostly consisted in two areas. One, did you spend the money on what, what was, what the money was supposed to be spent on, which was either lost revenues or, or healthcare-related expenses? And, and we had, we had no issues there. The second compliance requirement is, did you report the use of the Provider Relief Fund correctly when you reported it back to HHS? So we do have a finding relating to reporting. And so you did, you did report, but we, we looked at the lost revenue calculation that was reported to HHS, and it's supposed to tie back to your audited financial statements. Actually, let me go ahead and skip to that, to that finding, which is on page thirty-nine. So here's, here's the finding related to reporting. So on the, on the, the lost revenue calculation, there was, there was some audit adjustments on the previous audit that were not picked up in that calculation of lost revenues. So the, the amount reported to HHS related to lost revenues was not correct. Now, it didn't amount to any amount that would have, would have reduced the amount of qualifying expenditures or lost revenues for that Provider Relief Fund. So there's no risk of you paying the money back. What I have seen with other clients is that HHS has just reached out and said, please fix the provider or please fix the lost revenue calculation, report it correctly, and then, then they close it out. So, so not that significant of an issue, but, but it still was not correct when it was reported to, to HHS. Then on page forty is this, what we call the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This shows the federal grant expenditures for the fiscal year. That first line, the 335,000 was the Provider Relief Fund. And then you did have a couple other grants. The other larger ones were, you had a FEMA grant and then also from Wyoming Hospital Association, some, some money also related to COVID. So overall, you had $785,000 of expenditures of federal awards. And the threshold for having a grant compliance audit, by the way, was 750,000. So you were just, just barely over that, which is why we had to audit that Provider Relief Fund as a major program. On page forty-one is management's response to the finding and their corrective action plan, just saying that they'll go back and recalculate the, the lost revenues. And then on the last page is a follow-up of the findings that you had on the June thirty, 2022 audit that was done by a different firm, but we went through and we followed up with those findings. We found that all, all three of those areas were corrected by management. So no, no additional findings related to that. Before I move on, any questions so far? Okay, so we have two letters to go over. This first one is our management advisory comments. So this is, these are issues that we identified in the audit that do not rise to the level of being a material weakness or a significant deficiency. And so the two areas that we have, the first one relates to policies and procedures for federal awards. Because you do receive some federal grants or you had received federal grants, the federal government expects you to have a, a written policy and procedure document that, that addresses how grants are, are tracked, how they're expended, making sure the compliance requirements that come along with them are, are properly complied with. And so you should, I, you should adopt a policy and procedure related to federal grants if you do intend to receive federal grants going forward. And then the other comment we had was that there was a lack of internal controls related to the manual journal entry process. There, when we, when we looked at the journal entries, we found that the, the ones we looked at didn't have sufficient supporting documentation, just meaning that it wasn't retained. And then there was no documentation of those journal entries being reviewed. Now, we, we also looked at other controls in that area, mostly that you had a review process for the financial statements themselves, and, and we found that you did, mostly because you had contracted that, that out to the two firms, both Durbin and Casey Peterson, that were operating as your interim CFO at the time. But, but still, manual journal entries should have proper supporting documentation, and they should be, there should be documentation of a review and approval process for those. The last letter that we have is our board communication letter. And this letter just goes over various things that we are required to report to you as a governing board as a result of the audit process. The first area, kind of go back to the middle of the page, talks about those new accounting policies that you adopted related to the subscription-based information technology arrangements. You did adopt those policies, so there's no issue. It's just, it's just letting you know that you did. The next section talks about accounting estimates. You do have estimates in your financial statements. The most significant are the allowance on the accounts receivable for either contractual adjustments or uncollectible accounts. That is an estimated number. It's, it's estimate for what you expect not. Um, that is a, an estimated number. It's, it's estimate for what you expect not to collect. Um, we do audit estimates pretty heavily. They're a risk area for us, um, but we had no issues with that. Uh, the estimated third-party payer settlements is your Medicare cost report settlements. Even though the amount recorded in the financial statements is based on the filed cost report, those cost reports could also be audited in the future and those settlements adjusted. So it is, it is an estimated number in the financial statements. On the next page, uh, talks about difficulties encountered. Um, we, we did have, as you know, it's, it's November of two thousand and twenty-four and this is the, the June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three audit presentation. So there was definitely delays um, in the audit process, um, related to turnover and management. And then also you guys changed the, the contracted, uh, interim CFO, um, co, uh, accountants from, from Casey Peterson to Durbin during the period as well. And so, so those issues caused pretty significant delays in us getting, getting this audit completed. Um, other than that, we did not have any difficulties in working with management, um, during the audit process. So that, that, that's good. Um, next paragraph talks about audit adjustments. We had a couple audit adjustments, but none of them were material. And which, 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 that's a really good thing. It means that management in place, plus the contracted accountants that you had, were doing a good job keeping the books, the books in order. It was just more of a timeliness issue than a, than a correct, if, than, than a correctness issue. And we also had no disagreements with management during the audit. Um, we do require a representation letter, which we received. Uh, we're not aware of any other consultations with any other accountants. I mean, obviously you were consulting with Durbin and Casey Peterson, but we were very aware of that and that was not related to the audit process. Uh, any conversations that we had with management were not in any condition to us being hired as your auditors because you guys, as the governing board, hired us.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootleggers liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Uh, any conversations that we had with management were not in any condition to us being hired as your auditors because you guys, as the governing board, hired us. Uh, the, the last section there on the second page talks about our risk assessment process. So we are required by the auditing standards to assess risks in our audit planning and then use those risks to, uh, to, uh, to, to make our audit procedures. And so we are also required to, I, to report to you the risks that we identified. So that's what these relate to. So the first one is management override of controls. And that is a, a risk that we identify in every audit that we do. And what it means is that you have a good internal control structure in place, but it does rely on people to perform the internal controls and, and those controls could be overridden. And so we identify that in every audit we do. And we look at your internal controls and we do, do we do some, some walkthroughs to make sure that controls that are written are not over, overridden. The next one, actually the next two relate to, uh, the accounting estimates. So the allowance on the accounts receivable and the third-party payer settlements are the cost report settlement. Because those are estimates, they do, uh, they, they do present a risk of, of management bias in, in preparing those estimates. So we do, we do audit those pretty heavily. We did not encounter any issues with those. Uh, and then anytime you implement a new accounting standard, there's always the risk that it was implemented incorrectly or it was not implemented at all. And so, uh, so we list that as a risk as well, but, but we did not have any, any issues with that either. That concludes the presentation. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to stick around for a couple more minutes.
Does anybody have any questions?
Great job, Sean. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. And thank you, thank you, everybody for having me.
Okay, we look forward to the next round.
Yep, coming up soon.
Hopefully, hopefully it will go better.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Want to do tissues for? Hi, everybody. Everybody, I haven't seen everybody. I didn't need to make my interview. So, um, this is our, um, follow-up from John's format. So typically I use a different format as I explained to the finance committee. Um, however, we're just following through. So the first part of my report is old business updates. So, um, obviously the audit was presented and everybody got to hear about it, which is great. Uh, the audit entries have been, um, entered into Meditech and it's.
I put them up in the shared drive.
And we have them to pull up. Which ones do we want to?
Which she's on the sheet that.
It's the November finance.
That one right there.
That one right there. Here, thank you. I know, I know what it says.
They've got it now.
They got it? And everybody got one? Okay. Well, no wonder it was getting such strange looks. It's like going, I don't have a clue what you were talking about. So, um, now that every.
Should I bring, like, enough for everybody? One paper?
Uh, probably not. Finance committee would probably be good.
Yeah. All right. We'll try to look at them all.
I mean, we all do like.
I like paper, so I totally have this.
I am a paper person.
Yeah, totally got it. So.
I should have told you that. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't think about it. Um, so I wanted to let everybody know that the general ledger has had all of the audit entries in it. It, we have audit entries, we have reclassing audit entries and adjusting audit entries. Um, there were five altogether, very acceptable amount for an audit for two thousand and twenty-three. Those have already been entered and balanced. So we are now ready to roll that information forward for two thousand and twenty-four. So that gets us a little step closer to getting those financial statements. So, um, the two thousand and twenty-four audit, he really thought we would get that by mid-January when I talked to Sean. He, he hasn't changed that. Um, and we should get a preliminary trial balance by the end of December, which is something that's more internally for me than it will be for you, for beneficials, anything for you guys. Um, the cost reports are due by the end of this week here for signature for Kathy. And that will be the two thousand and twenty-three cost report and the two thousand and twenty-four cost reports. And those are the Medicare cost reports, Medicaid cost reports. We have a thirty-day extension on. So we will, we have a, a little bit more long, longer time to get those prepared. So, um.
So how is that?
Um, they will come, the cost reports will go electronically, Kathy to approve. And she'll find, yeah, she hasn't received them yet. So she'll get a Form eight fifty-five to authorize them to file electronically. So then they will have it by Friday. I have a follow-up already into Greg. I didn't get my cost reports. Where are they? So, um, because we want to make sure we hit that December second deadline that.
So does it feel like you're gonna, like?
We should be able to get it with.
We should be able to get it. The, the truth is, we're going to go back to those cost reports and re-submit them.
Once we get to two thousand and twenty-four audit then.
Yeah, because we, we just can't.
That's, that's what I was asking.
The two thousand and twenty-four cost report has to be done. The federal government told us, in essence, to put some numbers down on the paper that look reasonable. And if we need to re, redo it, we can midway. So basically, what I'm trying to say is that we got as close as we could to where we need to be so that we met the deadline because there was a big consequence for not meeting the deadline.
Yeah, so I think that was my question is whether it felt like you're close was relatively close.
Yeah. But interestingly enough, I don't have engagement letters for either one of those, so that's why.
So you have. So, um, the one thing I wanted to, um, remind everybody about, we will get payments based on the reports that we filed. We have receivables based on the audit statements. We are not gonna spend that money because of the fact we don't know the consequences of when we actually go back and file the final reports. And it would be fiduciarily irresponsible for us to go ahead and do that. So that money will be set aside and reserved until those cost reports can be true down. And that might take as long as a year. They're really important and they want them on time, but they don't respond necessarily on time. So, um, we have a, a twelve-month lag there that we could be facing. Um, we are working on our Charge Master, our database, which is how we price our charges. Um, we had one meeting and I missed the second meeting because I had a prior commitment. So we are rescheduled for next week. Um, we will try very hard for the January implementation date. It's questionable whether we will make that January date. What we'd really like to do is get a down and dirty raise for December and then another down and dirty raise for January. So we can get three percent in each year where it's warranted because it's been so long since you guys have raised your prices or adjusted your prices accordingly to the market share. So that's.
A quick question. So will, will prices where we're above the market, will they drop?
Yes.
And will prices where we're below will go up?
Yeah, because we'll have an actual analysis of it based on surrounding area hospitals and, and similar hospitals. And the, the big thing with that is we haven't had an evaluation or analysis then for four years. That's a long time in healthcare.
Yeah. So typically, um, we shoot for, when I do them annually, I shoot for about an additional one point three million in revenue increase, which is about three percent overall, up or down. So, um, that's typically where we will, that, that's what we're shooting for. Um. All right. And yeah, anything over that, we have to ask their permission and they can deny that permission. So, um, that's why we try to keep it to three percent per year. So sometimes they'll make an exception if we haven't done it, but we have to ask their permission. And it gives them the ability to say no. So we like to be, um, consistent with our pricing. So, um, cash flow and it, cash flow hasn't really improved a whole lot. The money that we are receiving is property taxes. Um, and we have IGT funds. As a matter of fact, in December, we're expecting six hundred and forty thousand from the state. So we paid for three hundred and twenty and then we get double that back. So we should be receiving, we paid it in October, we should be seeing that back in December sometime. So that's a program that, as a district and a call, we have participated in. So we like to take advantage of those. We get them for the manner and we get them for the hospital. So that's pretty good. Um, we have finally gotten our price transparency up on the website. We are waiting for CMS to do the review and notify us that we are, uh, acceptable on our price transparency. So it's a federal requirement that we have to have. So we have to update it. And we should take a look at it and do an annual review and update any payers or other information that we have. So it's something that we typically do right after the new fiscal year. We've got all our changes in place. We update all that information. So that's typically the time when we'll do it. Um, we have completed and submitted our state of Wyoming annual report that was, um, delinquent. So that has been completed. Our delinquent, uh, Department of Commerce quarterly reports have been submitted and we haven't gotten anything back. So we're assuming they've been accepted. Um, it's kind of if they haven't said anything, we're gonna go with it. So we have paid for our, um, insurance and, but we haven't received the invoice for our CNA surety bond yet. So we're waiting for the, evidently the agent has had some turnover or something and he's gonna look for it. And we, we should be getting it. When we get it, we'll pay it within the thirty-day requirement. Um, next year, I would really like to sit down and do a comprehensive review of all of our insurance. There's a couple of different insurance policies that I didn't see that we should have in the event of a disaster where we have, we are unable to inhabit the facility. Uh, we want them to pay us to set up a new facility so we can take care of our residents. We can put up an emergency, uh, station. We can take in patients and switch patients. And it will also allow us to retain and pay staff. We, we've asked them, yeah, we wanna pay out. How long will it take us to build a new hospital? Eighteen months. We want insurance to cover that payroll for us. So that's one of the things we really are looking for. I didn't see it. The broker didn't think we had it. It's something I feel that would be really important if we have a natural, a natural disaster. Um, so we want to go ahead and do that. We are currently working on creating insurance and contract matrices. So what those do is those allow us in a spreadsheet to search for maintenance contracts. It will show the date of the contract, the department, the piece of equipment, when it starts, when it ends, how much it pays, who's the contact. So we have everything more at a glance. Um. That's a big timeline.
My big is search, searching through all files.
Yeah, because I'm not ha, I'm not being very successful when I start looking through files. I can't find anything, guys.
And then you get mother load and then the next thing you need, you can't find.
Yeah, so it's one of the, it, it's a real time-consuming first thing to put together. But once it's done, it's valuable. It's like so at a glance. So I am, um, retentive enough and, um, detail-oriented enough. I like to function that way. So that's what we're gonna go ahead and do. Um, we have some new business. We have had some, um, payroll issues with HP. The payroll has been hitting the general ledger numbers incorrectly. I don't know if it, so if I'm boring you or your eyes are glazed and over, please tell me. So basically what's happening is our liabilities are hitting as debits, they're credit accounts. So everything should hit as a credit. Our expenses are hitting as credits and they're debit accounts. So we found that that was just a flaw or pause mistake in our, um, implementation setup. So they are in the process of fixing that now. Our next, um, ordeal will be, we're going to have Sage remove all of the prior payrolls from May eighteenth to present. And then we're gonna transmit, we're gonna reprocess and transmit all the new payrolls in. We're going to have Sage remove all of the prior payrolls from May eighteenth to present. And then we're gonna transmit, we're gonna reprocess and transmit all the new payrolls in. So then our financial reports will reflect correctly. Um, so that's, I'm not sure how much time that is going to take. I'm really pushing for them to get that accomplished within a week or so. I don't have confirmation of that. So, um, I will update everybody if it looks like it's gonna be a little longer because it's going to affect how quick I can get the financial reports out. And I'm really shooting for no later than the third week of December. So it, it would be very, I would be thrilled, absolutely thrilled. Yeah. And the next thing is, is we have, we get transmissions every day that transmits data from Epic to Sage. So it goes from our EMR to our accounting system. So what's been happening lately since August twenty-first is they have been erroring out. So, um, we opened up a, a ticket to have them help us. And we finally found out that during the setup, we put, there were three general ledger numbers that were put in that don't exist. And there was a department number that we don't use. So I've reached out to the folks that did the implementation to see if I can get their crosswalk. So what did we have versus what are we using and what did they put in? So we'd see if we can get them corrected. And then I have reached out to, um, Monument to see if there's anything that they can assist with. Because it's cash, um, contractuals, revenue, again, without those being done, I can't get the financials done. Again, without those being done, I can't get the financials done. And there are 205 entries that need to be corrected. So we're making progress. We at least identified what it was. We're also changing our accounts payable process. What's been happening is the accounts payable clerk would send all the invoices out for approval and not log them into the system. So if they never got returned, we didn't know they existed. So we're changing that to where everything's going to be gone to the AP clerk. She is going to log everything in. We're going to send all the documents out via Doc to sign to the department manager so they can sign them electronically and then we can get that returned back. We also have a tracking sheet for the invoices that we send out that we don't get back. So we can follow up with them. I was speaking to a contracted provider that we had and they said, well, I don't understand why I can't get paid. It's like because we didn't know your invoice existed. So I apologized. So I believe that that will allow us tighter internal controls on our accounts payable. And it will assure that our accounts payables get paid timely. So we'll still have a few struggles. There always are, but I want for the most part for everything to be complete. So then we have our accounts receivable reports, which is really pretty So basically it says our account AR days are 55.4. My goal is 43. And I want the Medicare days to be at no more than 23. So we have a, there, you can count out the days on my calendar and send out a notification, today's the last day to bill Medicare if you want to get paid in the same month we provided the service.
So 43 days overall?
Overall. Which means we'll have to do some cleanup of our self-pay, maybe a little more reaching out. Although Lola has done a phenomenal job. We need to, to reach out a little. I have her on a matrix. You know, based on the accounts, you have to make six phone calls a minute. And we know you can't make six phone calls a minute. So let's try and make, you know, if we can do three phone calls, that would be great. Because you're not going to reach everybody and it doesn't take more than a few seconds.
I'm assuming that you know that both, like in Gillette, you get a self-paid discount.
We're supposed to have one.
And I know. And the supposed is keyword, and both, and customers, there's a self-paid discount.
So what we are required to have and mandated by the federal government is we are mandated to have a charity care, which I don't particularly like the word. I like financial assistance and we do have a financial assistance program. In the clinic, we are supposed to have a sliding fee scale. I haven't been able to review that. So
They're using the same one as the hospital.
Which is not, it's not correct. It's not correct either. And then we should have an auto 20% discount anytime we have a self-pay account.
Yeah, and that's how it is for both.
It's that way everywhere.
Right.
So we will be implementing that. I just, I wasn't able to get everything done in the three weeks I've been here. So it's on my list.
I just wanted to make sure it was on your radar because I, I'm a self-paid.
Absolutely.
And you never see, like when, when you go to Campbell County and I hear, I've never been to Chester's. I don't know, but when you go there, on your ticket, it says if you pay this in full in 30 days, you get 30% off. You know what I mean? And but you don't see that queue. It's not obvious.
It isn't and actually they usually have to know about it or ask about it.
And so it would help that those self-pays that get paid faster if they saw that there was
I'm going to take a look and review the invoices that we send out. Because what I want on there is I want back of the description of our financial assistance program. The application of link for our sliding fee schedule. All of the discounts that we offer. You know, please ask for your discount. And we should have signage in the clinic. And we should know. We should know who our patients are that are paying self-pay, who are struggling financially. And we can say, hey, you know what? We could get you on a sliding fee scale. It's good for so many months. I always liked mine to be good 12 months. And then I require that they put a note in the patient's account. So it calendars up and it says, okay, this needs to have a renewal. So we ask, hey, are you ready to renew your sliding fee scale? If so, go on the website, fill out the application for it, we can come in for your appointment. And we can get it right then and there. So there's a little bit of nuance to the processes we need to install and fine tune. So it's on my list, haven't got there, but it is important. It's very important that we reach out to our struggling patients. And even if it's just their, it's just their choice. Yeah, and it's customary. And it should be our accepted best practice. So anyway, I lost my track. That's why I'm still on page one. Yep, that's what I was afraid of. So I do want to point out that bad debt is currently at 4.4 million. Typically, bad debt should be no more than 4% of your revenue. So I do have to dig into that. I need to make sure that we're, our, our general ledger is feeding into the right accounts. So I just, there's some things in there and it will take an deep dive. So I hope to have a, a good update for everybody at next finance.
That was that little graph I sent you guys.
Yeah, that's the one that's annoying, it's just going up. Yeah, so it could be a combination of we're just getting caught up. If so, that would be fairly easy. It could be that we have all of our contractuals, our, some of our contractuals are feeding into the wrong general ledger. It's not unheard of, but I just want to make sure that it's appropriate for bad debt and what the explanation is. If we're just cleaning up our accounts receivable, then that's the answer. And, and it should be just so noted on the financials. So page two is just enterprise billing metrics. You know, I'm not really sure what it is everybody is looking for for these because these reports, what you, don't tell me a lot. I mean, basically what I'm looking for is I want the aged by payer. And then when I see the age by payer, I want to know what the plan is to get that down. That's, and that's the information that as for finance on the board, I would expect that you would be looking for as well. If it's not, please let me know and we can go ahead and take a look at that as well. So on page three, we have our insurance balances. So one of the things that we've got is it does show you that we've got an insurance balance, but no claim status. And there are 64 of those. But $64 of those, it's like, what's hanging out there for 64 halls? So it, it just, it looks like it needs to be, get cleaned up a little bit. So I'm assuming that that report will change over the next 30 days. And the self-pay is always the hardest part of the accounts receivable to manage. Nobody ever likes to admit they're having a hard time. So that again comes from knowing your, your patient base. So we've got self-pay pending statements. Our statement should go out, we should have alphabetical splits. So they're on a rotating, they go out once a week. So A through D goes out. So everybody gets a statement every 30 days. Because the rule of thumb is four statements, three phone calls. Then you go to pre-collect. After pre-collect, it's 151 days old. We send it to the collection agency. And then you work with your collection agency so they can offer payment plans at a lower interest rate for a longer period of time. The hospital should offer some payment plans. They should be no more than a year. We're not a bank, we need our money. They got the service, we'd like to help them pay for it. But we don't want, you know, we don't want their first child. We don't want it to go for five years. We want to just get paid for our service. So that's one of the things that we need to take a look at. And we need to have a kinder touch from the call. So it's going to be scripted. Lola's very good, but when she gets yelled at, she has a tendency to start freezing. So we need to give her some, some information on how to deal with unhappy patients. Because we're calling for money. It's, it's never a good conversation, very rarely. You owe us money. Yeah, very rarely does, oh, let me get you a credit card. So yeah, so that's one of the things we're going to continue to work on. Because it's important to our patients that we reach out and that we're kind and we're courteous and we're aware of what's going on. We're not always, but we'd like to be. So the next thing I've got is a cash flow. So this is going to change. This is going to be kind of a form in process. One of the things I'd like to put on it is I'd like to put the day's cash on hand. I can't do that until I can verify the expenses. So we're going to go ahead and do that. So we did kind of tweak it a little bit from the one that had been distributed before. We put the money market account on there. We also are showing how much was transferred into the operating account. And in September and October, we made no transfers. So we were able to recoup, yeah. We were able to get paid and cover all of our bills without dipping. Salaries and benefits on, for the month of October are not relative or not, they don't show all the, the benefits because they're not hitting the general ledger correctly. So we can't get a right number. So that's actually been going on since May. So those numbers will change when we update and get all of those tests. So we've got a change in cash. I'd like to put the day's cash on hand. Typically, when I do my finance committee report or the finance report for the board, it's the same thing. I will put on there what your operating, what your cash is, what your expenses are, what your loss or gain is in a little snapshot. We're also going to be doing department manager P and Ls, pop-up law statements that will be emailed out to them on the 15th of the month or whenever I, whatever date I choose. So they will get used to looking at their P and L statements because they'll be responsible for it next budget year. So that's how we spend. So then we've got our last thing is our utilization statistics. And you can see first off, total patient days for October in 2024 was better than October in 2023. So we did have some good news in the month of October. It wasn't good all the way across, but it wasn't bad either. So physical therapy, occupational therapy and speech therapy really saw an uptick. They saw a lot more patients and we did verify that with him, with the department manager. So that is my report until I get ready to do P and Ls and balance sheets. Are there any questions or concerns or anything you're missing that I can get?
Yeah, just one question. I think we talked about finance. But we will get, once we reconcile all the special accounts.
A total that's
How much cash, so we're seeing all the changes, but it'd be nice to
Those are actual bank balances.
I know, once we reconcile. Just so we all know, like, okay, how much cash do we have? That would be handy.
Yeah, it goes with cash and cash gates on hand. So I'll have two lines, the cash on hand and then cash. I did write a note. I just didn't go by presentation for
I thought we talked about that.
Definitely. And if I didn't get it right, send it out. So is there any questions about anything that I presented or are we good? Everybody kind of good as we can get?
I appreciate the detail. I'm just so happy you answered it.
Yes. I'm glad I had something to present too.
I'm so happy it sounded like your thing. All the crowd was on one sheet of paper.
No, it's, you know, it's the, I've got to be able to see them on one page. If I can read it from across the room, that's even better, but. Okay, well, thank you so much.
So I just had two things to add from finance committee. And one was that Tish has promised us that as a board, we would begin getting financial packets back in the olden days. So we're super excited about that.
And will those be on SharePoint?
I can put them on SharePoint or I can email them. You tell me how you want them.
How it worked before is they, well, we could take them up at the front desk.
I always give paper copies.
At the front desk and we could pick them up.
And that was really nice.
Yeah, so what I will do is I will not leave them at the front desk, but you can stop by and see. You can have it.
Yes.
Very good. I appreciate that.
And the other thing that we had talked about in finance committee was restructuring the finance committee meetings.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Muke Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
I appreciate that.
And the other thing that we had talked about in finance committee was restructuring the finance committee meetings. So we as a finance committee wanted to bring that to the board and discuss it with all of you, what the thoughts were. Tish had said that in her experience, she usually had a, the public, it's sort of structured like quality committee. So the beginning part of it was open. And then we would go into just a meeting, a more executive style executive session. So that the finance, Tish and her team could talk freely with the finance committee members about things and, and kick around ideas. Sometimes we just like to kick around ideas and, you know, you don't necessarily want an idea that isn't fully refined to be out in a public session. So that was the thought about restructuring the finance committee. So we just wanted to bring it to the board and see what you all thought, if you, if you thought that was acceptable.
And we don't, we only have one public member usually, but we did have one. And then we've had some staff that have gone to it. But our big challenge is there's some things that we have to really brainstorm before we let them out, let it out everywhere, begin to ask people, we develop. I just, I totally support it.
We talked about this and I think it's a good idea, Lisa, let's give it a try.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
If it's not working or something, we go back to a more
And none of us wanted, none of us wanted it to be like an anti-transparency thing. So we do want to be open and transparent in all of things. But when Tish explained to us what the ideas were, you know, we
Yeah, we're not wanting to move anybody. It's, if we get to come up with a great idea, everybody will hear it. We come up with a bad idea, everybody will hear it.
So those were the two things that we want to finance committee to make. Do you have anything to add?
I think that's a good summary. I think you explained it very well, what we had talked about.
And was that when you were wanting to do those, the approvals that Catherine?
Cost reports.
Yes.
So Kathy, I looked in my notes and I, I had down cost report engagement letter approval with Durbin for fiscal year 23 and 24. Did I get that right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I have a question. So, so, so you're wanting to engage Durbin.
Durbin is, Durbin was already engaged for the 2023 cost report. Uh, we had to get some help from Casey to get some of that stuff.
Right, exactly.
But um, we want them to, for this time anyway, for 23, 24, they're prepared to be able to roll into the 24th cost report better than if we tried to switch it up at this point. So, um, but interestingly enough, I cannot find engagement letters for it. But they're doing the work, but technically we need an engagement.
I don't think, I don't think there was an engagement.
Okay.
So what you told us.
Okay. So then I can sign them if you just approve them.
Um, and then, so, so what we're talking about is cost report, not necessarily more accounting.
No, not more accounting. Um, I mean, it's an accounting firm doing it.
Right.
But not, not more accounting. No, we still, we're still reconciling.
Yeah, we're still using Patty.
Right.
Um, for the reconciliations. And I have a meeting with her to kind of go over where we're at, where she's at. Because we're kind of at a standstill until we can get the, the sage um, issue done, because that's where all the cash is. So um,
I'll call them again.
We'll see if you can't get a, get them another update. Um, I don't have the contact number for the implementation team. I just have, I just have an email.
It was wittily when you guys have it before, so.
An interesting company, but we will go forward with that. I, I, I'm not super particularly fond of them and it doesn't feel like they get a real great implementation process. Yeah. So, um, anyway, maybe it's just my thing. They're New Yorkers or something. They have a way about them. So. Um, so uh, the, the other things that we've mentioned, we did talk to financial committee about it, but we did put five goals together that are, are really our goals that we're sitting with our management team. So um, one of them is to ensure the viability of the organization while maintaining patient resident and staff safety. Um, by ensuring a return to fiscal accountability. Yeah, that's my report. Okay. And then um, we're going to limit non-essential
Do we want to go back and get that, get that?
Oh.
Do that motion?
Motion done.
I thought you did. I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
I'll, I'll try. Taking the secretary. Oh, oh, okay. So I moved, we authorized Kathy to sign an engagement or engagement letters um, to engage Durbin for cost report services for the fiscal year 23 and 24.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
And they do, and all those, if they were to say aye? All those poses? Uh, motion passed. So did Ben second that? Um, it was actually Ted who said he heard of.
He was quick. He went around. Wait, I just That's the only one yet.
Yeah, that's the only one. Thank you.
Okay, not too.
Okay, sorry. So you guys know that we're trying to return to fiscal accountability. So that's one of our goals. And uh, uh, not, limit non-essential expenditures. Um, keep them looking for what they want to. Um, we are going to find additional revenue streams through service lines and specialty services. That, that, that's something to be determined on how fast we can do that based on our cash flow and what, what it'll cost us. Um, we're going to freeze all non-emergent capital expenditures through the remainder of the fiscal year, second quarter and third quarter, except for expenditures provided through grants or foundation funds. I do have one potential other person that will do some funding for us, but and anything other than that, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do. We're freezing all overtime for non-essential employees. And the advanced overtime is required for patient care continuity of services or something urgent, then managers must approve overtime ahead of time. For non-exempt managers, because we have a few of those that may be required to work overtime, they have to seek approval from me, which most of them report to me. So that's not too hard for them. Um, um, we were putting that in effect December 1st, but they've already started working on turning in papers and other climate stuff, if they have some planned overtime that they need. So we're got, we, the, the goals, the way we're going to achieve those goals partially is through position control. We've been, we've been starting a report with our managers every month on overtime. We will probably be doing that on a bi-weekly basis now instead of monthly. Uh, we're going to look at our PPL, EA, IV in comparatives with our overtime and kind of see what that looks like. We have, we need to do an FTE need with current utilization. So making sure that numbers are right and we're not creeping up. There's some things that get a little bit of creep because we weren't, we weren't putting a position control in place and position standards. So we now have a formal process and a form that they have to fill out for any replacement positions and/or new position desk. Um, and it has to go through the executive team to get approved. Um, we are going to evaluate exempt versus non-exempt employee status because there's some that are not balanced. And so that's something we'll be doing as well. And financial reports, we kind of already talked about that. So I was hopeful that we're improving our AR cycle times and APGL adjustments that we've got to make to get things done. From the community health needs assessment, that's not only something we have to do, but it's also something that can help us with strategic planning and marketing going forward. And then we have a market wage analysis that we started on already. We've gotten some information, but we have to really look at that. And we're going to get rid of the current metrics we have because it doesn't really match what we are doing. And a lot of things were happening where it was pretty subjective, how you decide to get people wage increases. And there's people that are above their wage increases because there's arbitrary rates that's given to people with no, no justification score. So that will be done. And then uh, cost control measures are, we're just looking at our internal controls. That's from the auditing and from just being here, finding out what we found out about our accounting pieces and strategy so that we can get that in place. We're going to do uh, pre and post payroll audits to ensure proper checks and balances, eliminate cost barriers and process. Currently, we have a, uh, forty-two thousand dollars worth of um, errors that we found in our benefits pieces. Um, that we have to, because of being a government entity, we do have to go back and ask for that money back from employees. The same thing from people getting mileage after they stopped going anywhere to get mileage. Um, uh, it's, it's giving people too much money in their HSA accounts. It's been giving people two times, they, they were supposed to get a three dollar premium pay and instead they got double their pay and three dollars on top of it. So things like that, that we, we've um, done a thorough now review of all of that. So once we get to that forty-two thousand, we're, we're going to do it in a way that we can hopefully be employee friendly and sensitive, but uh, we will be asking for that back so that we don't go to jail. There you go. Oh, there you go. I don't like orange striped suits. Um, so, and then uh, credit and purchasing restrictions have been put in place. So now we have, we've had ten credit cards out. That's not acceptable. So um, we have pulled that back in and people are supposed to go to, rather than ordering from a credit card or something like that, they have to go into it with purchasing and have a purchase order and make sure that they get it approved through that process for the non-stock items that we have, uh, that people want to have in place. And um, because our credit card bills are outrageous. That's the word I'll use. And um, this will um, ensure closer monitoring of expenditures. And then we're going to look at this again and evaluate how we've done in the thirty days from here. But the managers are all aware of it and the ones that are sitting here didn't run away or tell me they were quitting. So we, we had a really good, we have a really good team of managers that are really willing to step up and make a difference. So I appreciate them very much for that. Um, I do have a couple, I do have a sheet that I'm going to give you, but I think I'll talk about it when we, we're going to talk a little bit about, just a little bit about REH results. Um, the rural emergency hospital results that are preliminary. Um, in that, in that piece of it. And so what I want to do is just give you guys this sheet. Pass them down along the way. Pass two there and give one to Nathan over there. It's a two-sided sheet.
Corinne, it's also in the SharePoint.
It's also in the SharePoint. Yeah. So, but I'll leave that for later because what I really wanted to do is talk more strategically and, and relative to what we begin, the beginning steps of the REH review. And that's not, we're not prepared to be talking about that yet.
So are we?
Then we got quality review. Medical staff again.
We met last night with quality. Um, we talked about our ED weights, since they were up a little bit. And when I was picturing grabbing numbers, uh, with my definitely more tissue feet, um, that we kind of talked about it myself. Um, so we're going to re-discuss it and that staff and maybe write them a letter. We talked about the manner, some of their goals that they've got going on. Uh, with the AR, the manners for Medicaid billing processes, emails. Um, behaviors are having some issues that they did give an audit of the documentation. And I think it was kind of from one employees working on that and the proper documentation styles. Melissa mentioned it today too. Meeting about documentation. Um, and then falls with major injury. Uh, we haven't had any falls with major injury lately, but they are having a daily meeting and there is a fall. Um, first management to tell them what happened. Um, well, help. Was it fair, but um, we discussed, we made an audit in a form for her to audit. Um, she's working on communication with the patients to help the days. They have to cancel things like that, just getting their patients. They're not wondering where they're at. And then Seth is working on getting a new secretary trained and he thought it's going well. Um, pharmacy Suzanne was working on the package of implementation. I believe it has done and I believe it's going well. I haven't heard about any issues um, lately.
No, they're, they're smiling now every day, which is really nice. Sure, yeah. I think that you can go in there now because the nets aren't all on the hip. They're on the counters.
We were going to tack that on to the man.
Yes, we can do that next month because they, they got, if they're for a while, there were pills everywhere in that room and I would not let you guys in because I do not trust you.
Then one is happy. I'm happy when I was sleeping.
I would quickly run out of there. When I went in there, it was like, that's like, there's a danger, danger, danger. So.
Um, so now Suzanne's working on pump drips and the pump library, making sure that the doses in the IV pumps match what we have in tech, so that it flows properly. Um, so she's updating that library, making sure that isn't happening out of itself. So um, she's working on that. Um, HR is working on annual performance reviews. Um, they're still in process, uh, in process, but they should be ready by December 20th to the employees. And then the managers, this is done and we'll remember them. And then the job descriptions, Hannah said that they were almost done. Um, but the managers have been asked to have them re-checked by December 20th as well. Uh, Tish touched on the finances. Um, on the AR, so it was sixty-one point four days, which is an increase from October. Um, so Tish is completing a record review from July 4th to sure accident. She would like to see our AR base for 22 and Medicare to 23. Um, health and HIM is working on chart deficiencies. Um, we had an issue discover with some chart deficiencies. We're working charts, um, so we're working to put processes in place so that doesn't happen again.
We have to process them in place, yes.
Um, Wendy was working on implementation of services, but that elevator's kind of been put on hold. So she's been put on hold with her implementation. Um, radiology, they passed the ACR and they also passed QSA recently. So they're up for a whole year.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop, certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Um, radiology, they passed the ACR and they also passed QSA recently. So they're up for a whole year. We're talking to their preparation and their um, governing. Um, infection control, Polly is, has a date set for November 30th for everybody to either have a flu vaccine or a declination. Um, if they don't have either one of them, then they can put them to schedule until they're in compliance. They're having a declination for the flu shot. And then we are seeing an increase in falls on the acute care side. We do have some confused patients over there. Um, so Denal and I are going to need to see if there's a way that we can prevent these falls, if there is a way. So we're going to start meeting probably with some of the nurses, start a little oasis committee and see what can be done if any of those falls down. And then the facility focus with departmental overtime. Kathy kind of touched on that. We'd like to see it at around three percent of our overtime. That's about it for that.
What do you want? On the flu shot, you said you'd like to get a flu shot or effective?
If they just decline a flu shot. Yeah, yeah. Something on file, if we get audited by the state showing that, that they either A have a flu shot or they have people showing that they hope. Because the state does look for that when they come into audits.
Which is why they get to get taken out the schedule if they don't.
Does that include the COVID shot?
That's, that they can have it, but it's optional and it's when we have it at a table.
I didn't know that, but you're fine.
Since the government learned a few things from that.
Well, I was worried that it may need to stay in their annual requirement for that.
The task force had little bits about that. So we made sure that it wasn't a requirement.
Thank you for that.
Um, moving on to medical staff. Leslie Hayman was here, um, for Centers for Solutions and she just kind of presented writers what they can do for mental health um, here in the, uh, in the community. Um, so they can do psychiatric evals, medication management, telehealth and some other services um, for the community. Um, going to pharmacy again. Suzanne discussed possibly changing the liquid lorazepam to tablets for end-of-life care. Uh, she said drawing it up was really thick. And it's hard to get an accurate dose on it. Um, so there is kind of some waste there. And then it's also, um, there's some kind of waste too. She said it takes her about an hour to draw up lorazepam and morphine together. Um, so her time should be spent elsewhere instead of turning that up. So we still have an issue with getting the Nope, nope, that is okay. Um, IV fluids is on a shortage though. And that's just because of the hurricanes. Um, Baxter's not sure when they're going to be back up again, but um, Suzanne did get a letter from the FDA saying that they could use expired fluids. Um, so far, we've got an issue.
I don't think I heard Baxter was going to try to be up and running again by February.
I, I heard that too. That was true.
Right.
She's just asking that the nurses be more aware of what they're doing. You know, if you have to give a five hundred liter IV, don't be grabbing a thousand liter IV. Be just more someone aware of what you're grabbing. We talked about joint injections um, being performed at the clinic. We're going to discuss more at this next staff meeting, but general consensus is creative not doing that.
They kind of said that occasionally some, but not like, not like a certain doctor used to do those all the time. And so we had a little problem with that, with the new Yeah, or, yeah, C, C orange, yeah.
Um, let's see here, and then Dr. Franklin brought two different types, one clinical that he'd like to use, one of them is non-irritating and non-painful, um, and then the other one can be used on the upper brace and the upper thighs. And then for your med staff, credentials, there's Mary Jordan, Dane Schroder, and Meg Dohlin, Maggie.
Maggie.
Two of them are clinic welcomes, and then one of them's a radiology, with, they're radiology.
And they don't have anything on their records.
Nope.
They've got same records. Doctor Reimer's retirement party is at the senior center on the 13th, 13th of December, from three to six. And then the residents are having their.
And Jan.
Huh?
And Jan.
Oh, and Jan, sorry, yes, and Jan.
December thirteenth.
December thirteenth, at three, three to six o'clock. So it'd be good if you guys go there, we're expecting lots of people. Um, residents, they have a craft and bake sale that they're doing, so it's a big deal to them. It's free to enter, but you must buy something, no money, so, just kidding, so, buy their stuff and make them happy, because that's the money they use for their activities and things that they do for themselves, so it's in the employee dining room on that day.
So last year I went and I got your cookbook, and I use it all the time, it's great, it's really great.
Pretty popular.
Yeah, so if you don't wanna cook for Thanksgiving for baked goods, just buy a bunch of baked goods there.
I think that's pretty good timing, actually, it's like, oh, I don't have time to cook, I have, I'll grab some.
And their delicious caramel corn.
Yeah, caramel corn, yeah, so, they always have some in there.
Yes, yes.
Yep, it is.
You take credit cards.
There's an ATM across the street.
Three percent charge on that.
That's fine. And then our next would be the manner.
Yeah, so, we're looking good on census, and yeah, it was kinda rough on us, so we had five residents, we averaged forty in October, but the good news is we still got forty, so we got one coming in Monday, so we did have just one admission in October, but October's only kind of a small one, and we're getting more and more, so hopefully that starts picking up more, and yeah.
Where are the referrals coming from, if you don't mind me?
Uh, basically, so, so yeah, here, we got.
From the Lask.
Yeah, South Dakota, we just got one, and yeah, we got a couple from Gillette, so.
So I, I think I mentioned it, but I think it would be good for everybody to check, I remember if we talked about it, but, um, it's been suggested by a lot of people who are community members, with a garden club that were full, and they also think, when they hear us talk about, we have a lot of students, they think that means there are people that want to be in the neighborhood, but there's no room, and so they're just like, waiting in the hospital for a room, and so, all around, people, just like when we did the elevator, and everybody was like, oh, wanna raise our taxes, and we didn't, so, I'm told there are people who have gone other places, because everybody's convinced we're full, and there's a huge wait list, and so we need to really work together and figure out, please go for something, and start getting our message out that we've done really nicely, and, you know, around Christmas is a good time to visit.
And I don't think we should call the waiting list, the waiting list, we talked about that, it's not a waiting list, it's like.
I have a waiting list that's about six pages, but when you start calling people, they're not ready to, I meant it's not a waiting list, that's a watch list.
Yeah, that's a watch, I agree, so I, I think.
When people start calling, we're gonna do over that, I guess, and that.
So I think the key message is, we have open beds, and we're, there is no wait list, we need, we just, we just gotta call them, that we do not say all, how silly it is, but yeah, that does exist, and we need to dispel it.
Is that, is that something new, or is that always been? I mean, the idea that there's been no waiting list, because I've always heard that you, that it's.
It's impossible. Yeah, when I, when I didn't know, didn't know this hospital, I would hear that there was a waiting list for it. Yeah, so waiting list, I mean.
It's always been.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, they definitely say that. Yeah, we could change it to a watch list.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I don't think we should ever talk about the watch list.
Oh, yeah, never. Yeah. Call us, yeah, just, call us, we can help.
Yes, call, we can help. We have availability, please call. We, we talked about some marketing ideas, so I think that we're gonna, we're gonna work on that.
I think, yeah, we, we all talked about that, and I think you're right, uh, but also, you know, call for a tour. You know, schedule a tour. And I think the key, the key message is, we have open beds, right, there's no wait list, come and sign up.
Yeah.
See what happens.
Something, yeah, that I hear in one of the reports, is it, am I confusing things, Medicare changed to two sixty a day?
Yeah, that's what was on.
Two sixty point fifty nine cents. Yeah, there's fifty nine cents in there, don't forget that. It was two fifty. Yeah, so we got like.
Four hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Or a day.
A day. We do think that there's a good chance they owe us some money, that we can change that, so. Yeah, we're gonna update, we're gonna review those, see about getting our rates, our reimbursement rates higher. The government is so generous.
Yeah. Where you live.
Yeah.
Whether you're in Ukraine, they're generous.
Yeah, that's true, since I've been to Ukraine, then you have, you have to have somebody in your family go get your pharmaceuticals and bring them to the hospital, you can get them, so, it's, it's a different world. It's a different world. Um, yeah, so.
Okay, so do we have anything else? Did, have we, do we know anything about board training and Tony?
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, look at that, he, we decided, he's in Prague, and he's in, he's in Poland right now, because he's doing some mission work, but he, we decided that we would talk to you, and let me find it, in talking to all of you and trying to get availability, that we should just move it into January, and January fifteenth is the, the day before the board meeting, that's one of the, um, is, the twenty-second is, if is in the next week after that, the week of the sixth, thirteenth, or twentieth, really are pretty good for him, so if you guys could come up with.
So I am.
Karine, did you hear that?
Yes, I did hear that, I'm looking at my calendar, thank you.
Okay.
So I leave January fifth, and I don't come back till the twenty-first.
Okay.
I actually am.
You don't come back till the twenty-first, so the week of the twentieth, can you guys look at that week and see if there's someplace?
So finance committee, because I think, Kevin, did you say the board meeting was over? Or no, I don't think it's the sixteen.
No.
You're gonna miss finance.
I will miss finance, you're in charge, unless you, Ted might be in charge. You guys can arm wrestle at the beginning of the meeting.
We'll just pass it back and forth, you know, taking the important news, everybody. I know, part of January, I'll be gone for a week, I don't know, I haven't talked to my boss.
Well.
The real is, January.
Can, can you, I'll give you my phone number, can you guys text me some, some ideas, you, I have, you're hard to, you're hard to corral people.
Should I put Kathy on that, on the board chain, I keep meaning to do that, or, you know, the texts I've got with whole board chase, but Kathy on that one, so she knows.
But it's kinda tough to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mary is in here.
Even if we all switch.
So I'll send, uh, I'll, we send out a, from the week, the twentieth, the week of the twentieth, after the twenty-first.
Okay.
And/or if you, you don't do that, then I'll have to, probably end it.
Tony, you're going to worry, or go, call.
I can do the twenty-second.
I think, okay, so twenty-second, twenty-third.
I used to have this tool, I wonder if I can still figure out how to use it, that it would give you the options to pick what days, there's probably some software I don't have here, that you could pick which days people could pick that they could, would be available.
It's like a Survey Monkey.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we'll do a Survey Monkey, that's a good idea.
You can send it, and put it inside on a.
Doodle poll is what you're thinking.
What is it?
Doodle poll.
Yes, I think that's right, yep. I'll look into something that I, I'll send you some dates, and, and then hope that you all find one day, just one day that you can.
So it sounds like that week, that week of the twentieth is.
Is gonna be rough, too.
Well, no, hopefully.
What about the week of the twentieth?
Well, that's the end.
Well, he didn't mention it, but I'll just tell Tony he has to look at the twentieth, the week of the twentieth.
But that's, I mean, oh, no, it's January, not February.
Yeah, January, the last week in January.
That's what I'd say, let's go for those two.
All right.
Hopefully, hopefully Ted.
I texted the boss, but I don't, she hasn't responded.
All right. It's good to have a boss, it's good to have somebody.
She makes all the travel.
Does she?
You just travel.
I do.
Uh, so.
I just nod, it's fine.
Are we ready to adjourn to executive session? I forget what we have to do, somebody needs to make a motion to move into executive session.
You have to adjourn, yeah, just make a move.
Yeah. And then we adjourn the regular meeting afterwards. And then are you gonna send me some invite to a room or something?
Yes, we will.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave this room, or?
No, you're gonna stay right there.
You stay right there, we'll move you.
Pop-up comes up on your screen inviting you. Perfect, thanks. Okay, so somebody wanna ask to move into executive session?
You wanna do it, are you?
Ben, so just.
You've gotta read this.
Read that whole thing down there.
Executive session under sixteen dash four dash four zero five A two, I got that, okay, to consider the appointment employment right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, special person or employee, seven, to consider acceptance of donations which the donor has requested be kept confidential, and nine, to consider or receive any information classified or confidential law, including trade secrets.
One second, if you need it again.
Oh, no.
Just send backwards.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, guys, I.
It's my husband's birthday, so.
You go.
Yeah.
And I think for the record, I would like to mention the number seven, Dan.
Yeah, you guys have rocked this year, this is great.